Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining the South Fulton Coalition. Tonight, we will feature Penny Webster Lewis. Ms. Lewis is a member of the District Two community for the city of South Fulton, and she is running for the council seat. She is here tonight to tell you why she should be the next person to fill that the soon-to-be available seat for the District Two representative. Also tonight, we have the moderator, Ms. Patricia Wise. Patricia is a District Seven resident, and we look forward to hearing more about Patricia and hearing more about Ms. Webster. Ms. Wise, you have the floor. Please take it away.
Thank you very much, Rashad, and welcome, everyone. Ms. Webster, I want to welcome you tonight, and it's gonna be fun, and we're gonna get some, hopefully, some great information from you so that District Two can make the best decision possible for their district and as a representative of the city as a whole. So without further ado, I've got several questions that I'm gonna bring on, and of course, we're gonna let the participants ask questions. Everybody knows that they can go to reactions and raise their hands, and we can get this started. So my first question for you, Ms. Webster, and every candidate must prepare to take on responsibilities of city government. What have you done to prepare yourself for your district? And what skills do you have that transfer to your new potential position?
Thank you for that question. And first, I want to thank the South Fulton Coalition for hosting this. This is a really great opportunity for the residents to get to know a little bit about me and for me to talk about what's important in this campaign for this position. In terms of what's prepared me for this role, I have been a lifelong public servant, and this role is public service. It is not a position where you can make a lot of money or get a lot of prestige. It's about serving your community. I have served our country. I was an Army vet. I left the Army as a major. I didn't retire because I had too many IRR, Individual Ready Reserve years. I've also served for 30 years with the U.S. Department of Labor, Office of Job Corps at the highest levels. I left as a Deputy National Director for Regional Operations, so I have experience with budget formulation and execution for a $1.7 billion, with a B, budget. So I know how to do the, and those are the things that the council members do. They make ordinances, they approve variances for zoning, and they handle the purse strings, just like our Congress does for the entire country. Our city council does the same things, and the skills that I've gained over my military career, I have great leadership skills, and my civilian career, I have great leadership skills, budget skills, and policymaking skills. So I think that uniquely qualifies me to serve in this role because it won't be a major spin-up to get in there right away. And I love District Two. I love the city of South Fulton, and I think I can bring something positive to help the city move forward. I'm not gonna bash what's happened or is happening because we still are relatively new, but I want to make us better. I want us to be that city on the rise, and so I want to be a part of moving our city forward and our district as well.
Thank you for that answer. I'm retired military. I'm a disabled veteran. So thank you for your service, ma'am.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. So next question, and I've got a lot of them, but we won't do all of them. Leadership is the foundation to any operation, military, city, state, federal government. What type of leadership style will you bring to your district? And how will that leadership style transcend when you represent, as you represent, the city as a whole, as a group?
Well, first thing I want to say, I'm a situational leader because sometimes you're in a position where you have to be a little bit more autocratic as opposed to democratic, but I'm also a team player. So I am the kind of leader that listens for feedback, listens with the purpose of understanding. And, but, there are times when you can have collaboration to get something done, and then sometimes where you have to draw a line in the sand and take a position. So I would say my leadership style is situational, and that's served me well over both my military career and my civilian federal career because you have to be flexible. Sometimes you don't get your way, and you have to pick yourself up, dust yourself off, and keep on moving forward and be collegial and respectful and professional in your department with your colleagues, your other fellow council members, and particularly constituents, because your constituents hire us. We don't, and we are to tell them what we're gonna do. We need to seek their input and see how they really feel about things before we make final decisions and make those votes in certain circumstances.
Wonderful. When we talk about fiscal responsibility, we talk about budget, spending, allocations, disbursements, logistics, and things like that. And I know that you're fully aware of a lot of the issues that this current council has in regards to P-card spending, unjustifiable travel, and oversight when it comes to the purchasing department or the accounting department handling those things. What is your experience and where do you plan to go in dealing with these issues? Because it looks like it's just gonna keep going. And the second question is, how do you plan on managing your P-card?
Okay. Since I'm a federal employee, I'm gonna answer your second question first, if that's okay. Since I'm a federal employee, or I'm retiring in December, we have credit cards, and we are accountable for what we purchase. There are restrictions on what we can buy, and they're laid out, and you sign an agreement saying, "This is how you will use this card." And you have X number of days to reconcile turning your receipts, and you have to hold on to those receipts for six years. So if we don't currently have an actionable process for P-cards, the first thing I would encourage our city manager to do, along with the finance and the purchasing department, is develop a protocol and what the standards. You have to have standards, and those standards have to be clearly communicated, and all council persons, or not just council, all persons who are in possession of the card need to sign this agreement and understand if they don't buy the things that they're supposed to, they're personally financially responsible. So I would need to first take a look at what that policy says, and we also have ethics rules. And so I would like to see what the ethics rules are for the council and other members that are dealing with public funds because there's ethical conduct and there's unethical conduct. So I would, because I don't know what the ethics rules are right now, they might be very watered down. I would work with city council and the city manager because what we have to remember is while the city manager reports to the council and the mayor, the other staff do not. So what we have to do is communicate collaboratively with the city manager, and it shouldn't be one-on-ones. It should be a group conversation where we all mutually agree to abide by certain rules, certain protocols, and certain procedures. And if we don't, then there should be consequences for that behavior because it's all about behavior. And I think I kind of answered both of your questions, but it's...
Yeah, yeah. Let's just touch on the travel. There's been a lot of travel going on, and it just, for me and a lot of other citizens, it just, it seems like it's a vacation on taxpayer dime. And how does that relate to having an economic and development department? Wouldn't that be their area to see...
Economic development is not a council person's role. I mean, we need to be aware. We need to know who the developers are and what their reputations are, but it's really the economic development department's responsibility to go out and seek businesses. However, I will say, for example, this week is the Congressional Block Caucus. It is beneficial for our city officials to be in touch with our congressional representatives and be a part of that because sometimes those activities generate movement on initiatives that we have, like our infrastructure needs, for example. So I don't think all travel should be banned, but the travel should make sense.
Thank you.
The travel should make sense, and without putting anybody down, some of the travel, I agree, has been, why? What benefit is it to the city? If it's gonna benefit the city where you're talking to other leaders that have influence on city of South Fulton benefits and resources, then by all means, if you need to travel to DC for that, absolutely. I remember one time when I was in DC before I, for work as the Deputy National Director, the whole contingent from South Fulton came because of the Job Corps Center over in District Three. That's been stalled, delayed, and it's been eyesore. But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, those meetings were necessary because what we were doing at the national office was gonna impact the city. So I think it's case by case, but some are clearly not necessary, and they should be approved by the purchasing agent.
Yes, exactly. A purchasing agent, yes. And when I was in the military, we did a per dim, right?
Yes.
So we did per dim. So everything was lock, stock, and barrel. I mean, the tickets, the travel, tickets, plane tickets, hotel, all that was taken care of. And you maintain, yeah, great question. One of my issues, and this will be my last question so we can open up the floor to participants. On your website, it says transparent and accountable leadership, and we know that is exclusively pertinent in the military. Accountability leadership is, too, by far, one of the major aspects that make our military so strong. And you also mentioned that ensuring open communication, physical responsibility, and policies reflect the needs and values of your district. How are those same values, and I try to remember that not only do you represent District Six, but you're also a representative of the city as well. So how do you bring those same things to the city?
And I'm gonna use a cliche that my mom used to say to me, pretty is, is pretty does. And as an Army officer, there was an expectation that we conduct ourselves in a certain way. So that's the first thing. How I carry myself, how I engage with the constituents. I am committed. I will never disrespect a constituent because that's who put me in this role, whether it's a constituent from my district or from another district. Because I've been to city council meetings, and folks have stated their opinion, which is appropriate during public comment, only to be bashed by council. So I'm saying to you that I commit not to do that. Leadership and accountability and transparency, transparency's thrown around a lot, but I think it's more, it's not enough to just put out a couple of days before a meeting's gonna happen. Or if there's an ordinance that's only gonna affect one, or zoning change is only gonna affect one particular community because the developers only have to communicate with one mile, within one mile. Why not, for me, I would make sure the neighboring communities were aware that it was happening too. Because, just because it's not in that one-mile radius that the developers have to do, I, as the councilwoman, need to make sure you know that this is coming down the pipe. And I'm not afraid to stand up and be the voice that's not with the fold. You know, if residents are telling me, "We don't want this," it's my duty and obligation to bring that message forward. And hopefully, my colleagues on council will consider that I'm bringing the voices of my constituents to them. But just know that, even though I'm the councilwoman for District Two, or will be, I only get one vote, and I hope to convince or persuade my colleagues to vote in the same manner that I have because it's important to the residents. I want them to feel that they can come to me. And I will also, I'm willing to go to HOA meetings, whole quarterly forums because you need to do more than once every six months, meet with your folks and explain the changes that are coming. All of those things are leadership and transparency.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I had to step away real quick.
I'm fine.
But that was a great answer. Rashad, do we have any hands up or anything?
Yeah, we don't have any hands up, but I have a question for you.
Okay.
Wait, wait, hold on. We do have a hand up. I apologize. Yeah, Brandon Eads, please unmute yourself. You have the floor. Thank you.
Hey. Hey, can you guys hear me? Okay?
We hear you.
All right, cool. Hey, Ms. Penny, how are you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing pretty well. Can't complain, honestly. So I do have a question. It's gonna be maybe a little controversial, controversial question, but I have one. I don't normally get to speak controversially, so I definitely appreciate Rashad and the South Fulton Coalition for making this space for us to all speak freely. So at last night's forum, one candidate chose to criticize instead of answering my questions directly. But in District Two, we've seen real foundation laid out from sidewalks investments, public safety investments, and parks and recreation at Clifton Dell. My question to you, Ms. Penny, is how will you hold yourself accountable and transparent to the voters while also recognizing these positive steps already laid down? And explain how you will build upon that.
Absolutely. Because there are positive things that have happened. You know, I will be, for example, I know there's a plan, though it's not budgeted yet, to replace the Clifton Dell building that we tore down because it was uninhabitable. But I would want to stay on the team about when are we gonna budget that construction and the other things that we need to do, working with Georgia DOT to get the, I know we have a community meeting coming up on the 30th. There are a lot of things working in the background. The problem is a lot of residents don't know. So I want to encourage residents to become engaged, to show up at meetings. And if you can't come physically, a lot of them are streamed. So those who are listening, if you can't go to the meeting, stream the meeting until you can be an informed constituent. But I would try to stay on the path and make sure I'm well-educated in what the plans are. And right now, as you know, Brandon, there is a, our five-year comprehensive land use plan is in draft. I have some concerns with some parts of it, and I plan to talk to our current councilwoman about it because I have studied it. I went to the Planning and Planning Commission meeting, and I spoke on it about the things that concerned me as a private citizen and listening to my neighbors. There are some of the same concerns, but that doesn't mean that some of the things that are in play need to be thrown out. You never throw the baby out with the bathwater. And I never, what one councilman told me, no, commissioner said, "Never punch down" because the job is hard. It's not an easy job to represent 15,000 residents that live in South District Two and 115,000 that live in the city of South Fulton. So please know that I will make sure that I'm well-informed. Use the staff to keep me informed and understand the ordinance that exists and follow them. I am a rule follower, so that's, you know, one thing I can say about being a military major. I had to hold my troops accountable, and I was a military police officer. So I understand law and order. I believe in following the law. I believe in following the rules, and I will hold myself to the same standard. It's not what's good for the goose is good for the gander. We all have to follow the same set of rules, and I will continue the progress that our current council has made with the improvements because I know we have another roundabout or double roundabout coming up soon, if I'm not mistaken. Brandon, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I think so.
Is he still there, or did he leave?
He might be on mute.
Oh, okay.
Yes, that is absolutely correct. We have a few roundabouts. Actually, that's coming. So, you know, again, I just want to thank you for being truly transparent and taking accountability to what's actually been laid out in our district because, you know, as a resident of District Two, it isn't just, you know, if I work for the city of South Fulton, it isn't just work for me. I live here as well, so I take pride in what I have worked on and what I've helped assist bring to life for our community and the residents that live here. So I greatly appreciate you for counting those and making sure that that is actually front and center and that you will commit to making sure that some of that information and some of those projects are lifted off the ground once you're in office.
Correct. Absolutely. It's like you don't, like I said, you can't throw the baby out with the bathwater. You have to start from a point, a positive point, to make positive change. And there's some things that I'd like to see that we haven't quite gotten there yet that hopefully can be implemented. I know years of plans are more than one year out. There are a couple of years, sometimes five years. So the things that are happening today are things that may have been planned four or five years ago. And so just know that all the positive things that are happening in the city, I support. I applaud the team that's put those there, but I want to move us forward and give us more. You know, people ask for green space. People ask for upscale dining. But people also need to recognize we have some little gems, even in District Two. As if, if you've ever been to Bellas, that food is amazing. It's small.
Yeah, it's amazing. It is amazing.
So folks are thinking of name brand, but some of our small businesses that are operating in and near the city of South Fulton, you don't have to go to Buckhead. You don't have to go downtown. You can go right around the corner. You know, there are decent places, Baltimore seafood, crab and seafood. It's in District One, but it's still in the city. I go all over the city. I serve all over the city. Being a member of AKA, you serve wherever you're needed. We were chartered in this city. All of our service projects are in the city or support the city. So I'm about the city of South Fulton, but particularly about District Two.
Thank you for that answer. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you again, Ms. Penny, for that. I really appreciate the response.
The restaurant was Bellas. I saw the chat. Right in the Butner Plaza, and I think they're gonna expand, maybe move into the space that was previously, what was the name of that? I know you know, Brandon. I can't remember the name of the, it's no longer there. But Bellas has amazing food, and Baltimore crab and seafood has amazing food. And if you want to venture into Atlanta to Old Cascade, go to Aretha's at the Point. Food is delicious all over this world. So there are places that you can go locally. Infinity Lounge. Thanks, Brandon. That's, I think Bellas is supposed to be moving into some of that space so they'll have more space to serve more customers because their food is amazing.
All right. Well, great for the food in the restaurant. I'm already hungry. Is there any, do we have any hands up, Rashad?
I don't see any hands up, but if anyone in the audience would like to ask a question, please use the reaction button and raise your hand, and I will take you off of mute. We have a hand from Lynn Reed. You have the floor. Please unmute your mic. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me?
I hear you.
Okay. So my question, Penny, is, is what have you previously done, community involvement as far as advocating for a community? And what kind of came out of your advocacy of trying to promote, I guess, positivity in the community or things that the community is looking for? Does that make sense?
Yes, Lynn, for me, it's really small-scale because I've done so with, in my own neighborhood. Sometimes I think you gotta start at home. Service starts at home. I live at the Summit at Stonewall Hotel. We are a fairly decent-sized subdivision. And I was here for the transition, even though this community is actually over 20 years old, we just transitioned to a owner-based HOA instead of a developer-based HOA three, three and a half years ago. So I was instrumental in getting the neighbors, we could not get our neighbors to engage to even have a meeting to elect officers to take over the HOA. So I went door-to-door, reached in our own pockets and bought door hangers and put them on doors of every neighbor. We did C-click-fix things for the problems we had with sidewalks to make sure the city knew we had issues that needed to be addressed. We're still trying to resolve our issue with D.R. Horton and not having a clubhouse for a subdivision with 498 homes. We, so I have worked diligently in my own community. However, I've also volunteered all over this city. I participate in the road cleanups on a Cascade driving range to make sure we keep our city beautiful. I participated in some of the food donations in each of the districts. I participated in the Autism Festival. We're just volunteers. We're just people that want to serve and serve our community wherever, from where we are. When you're not in a position, it's hard to do certain things. But I've been appointed as the Vice Chair of the Veterans Advisory Committee, and we're trying to do, make sure there are resources for veterans in the city of South Fulton. A shameless plug, our next meeting is Monday at 6:30 at Creole Park. So for those vets out there, if you want to come and find out what we're trying to do for veterans in the city of South Fulton, please join us. It's a new commission or a new board, advisory board, but veterans, there are a lot of veterans in the city, and we want to make sure that their needs are being met and that the city is considering them, and particularly those who might be eligible for waivers of their taxes or, what is it called? I cannot think of the word for it right now. But long story short, we want to be able to provide resources to our veterans other than just the VA. So those are the things that I've done so far. I've never held public office. This is my very first time pursuing public office, but it's because it comes from a place of love and a spirit of service. And I don't want, I don't need to be served, and like I said, I'll be retired, so I'll be able to do this job full-time. So you have my full commitment of doing what's necessary for District Two and the city of South Fulton because I won't need a job. I'll have a pension, social security. I know I only look slightly over 29, but I am a senior, and I'm not your average senior.
Thank you so much. Was that able to answer your question there?
It was, but can I ask another question while I'm on mute? And I apologize if this question was previously asked, but I'll ask it anyway. So what are some of the things the current councilwoman that's in place that you liked? And what are some things that you feel when you get in office, you'll do differently?
What I like about what our councilwoman did was recognize that there were some needs. For example, when we were complaining about the traffic, not the traffic, the dangerous intersection at Campbellton Road and Summit, Stonewall Tell Road, our councilwoman was very active and involved in getting that light up. So that, that I thought was a great thing because it made a huge difference for those of us trying to get onto Campbellton Road from some, from Stonewall Tell. That's not just Summit at Stonewall Tell, but that's also Waterford Commons and the Promenade, all of those subdivisions, and there's two more coming on Stonewall Tell. So getting that light is gonna be, is a game changer. So I was really appreciative of that. Actually, getting the walking trail and the dog park at Clifton Dell Park, I'm looking forward to the building. I'm looking forward to us budgeting for the community center. While it's great to go to Sandtown and it's great to go to Walker Mall with 115,000 residents and gosh knows how many subdivisions that don't have clubhouses that need community spaces to meet. I think it'll be really important for us to have something in the district which allows subdivisions without clubhouses a reasonable rate to have a space to meet. That's one of the things that I would do, push. So I hope I answered your question. And what I would do differently, like I said, I would actually reach out to the neighboring communities about initiatives that are gonna impact them. And I'll just be very straightforward and transparent because I'm not afraid to speak my piece. I was not in support. I was one of the 300 District Two residents that signed a petition against changing the zoning at Zero Campbellton Court, whatever, which is at the intersection of Cascade, Palmetto, and Campbellton Road. And my primary reason was that we haven't had any infrastructure improvements. If you go to Douglasville, Campbellton Road, which is called, what is it, Fairburn?
Fairburn.
Right, that is a four-lane, but it's a two-lane for us, and we keep adding density, but no infrastructure improvements. The road is too narrow. It's very dangerous trying to make the turns onto Cascade, Palmetto. Traffic is backed up to Stonewall Tell from Fulton Industrial, and we want to add another quote-unquote 400 people. And since we have no public transportation, which is another topic, that means cars. And that means more congestion. Most of us moved here with a certain idea of how we wanted to live. So I am one of the people who stood up against this in the zoning meeting. I will continue to stand up against this, even though the council approved it, a vote of four-three. I am owning up to my behavior. I sent the mayor an email asking him to veto that ordinance, that document. So, and he did. I know I wasn't the only one who emailed him, but I'm letting you know because I can't be fearful of how somebody's gonna feel because I speak my mind and I speak my neighbor's minds. When you have three hundred residents who don't want something, somebody has to say something. So I did, along with others. So that's, that's one of the things that I would say. And so I would want to include, make a, I'm a big tent person, so make more people involved in the discussion, even though the law says the developer only has to do a one mile radius. Well, I'm not the developer, I'm going to be your councilwoman, I'm going to represent you. I'm going to do what you need, I'm going to keep you informed, I am going to stand up for you.
Yeah, yeah, so I, so I, let me say something real quick because I, that area does impact where I live. And we actually have been fighting, you know, additional development because of infrastructure, it hasn't been expanded. And to your point Penny, in Douglasville, when they started building out, they built the roads out as well. But they seem to not do that in the city of South Fulton. So I guess my only request is when you get in office, make sure you have a great relationship with G Dot because we've been told that G Dot is the key, I guess the cardholder to ensuring that our infrastructure gets expanded out too. So, uh, appreciate your, you know, help on pushing that anywhere you can, not just in District Two, it seems like it's.
Anywhere, anywhere, right. But I want to add something else. I actually reached out to Representative Dawson and asked for, because it is a state road. And if we can get our state representatives involved, and he said he most definitely would. I have a meeting scheduled with, uh, our State Senator Rashawn Kemp and I plan to ask him for the same support. This is something that's much needed, it is not, doesn't just benefit District Two. Campbellton Road is a major thoroughfare. And the apartments that were built, um, the townhouses, what is it, Sandtown Falls, Story at, um, Riverside, the, the townhomes behind Story at Riverside. There's a new subdivision coming across the street from Waterford Commons Phase Two. And another one, as you go further down Stonewall Tell, there's a subdivision coming there too, before you get to Stonewall Tell Elementary. So when you see all this development, all I see is, is, is traffic.
Mm-hmm, we all do.
I'm working on it, as an individual citizen, not as a, um, because I'm not elected, but I'm a.
Well, you continue to be a mouthpiece even if you don't get elected, we appreciate it.
And thank you for that question and thank you for that answer. Uh, Rashad, do we have a hand up?
Yes, yes, that's my hand. So, um, we have a, we, we have a comment in the chat, but I'm going to phrase it as a question. So, um, ha- so, um, a couple of years ago, the council made the decision to re- to put restrictions on public comment. Where do you stand on, um, making those changes to br- to remove those restrictions on public comment? And then as a follow-up to that, what are your thoughts on re-enabling the live chat that they took away, um, in, in YouTube?
I, I, okay, to answer the first question, I think we need to change it back. Although we just need to make sure that we put guardrails around not having folks cuss folks out. I mean, that's, that's, you know, there's, like I said, decorum, we need to set up parameters and make sure everybody knows the rules of the game. If everybody knows the rules of the game, then we shouldn't have issues. And at, we should be able to comment on anything that is, uh, germane to the meeting. Um, if something has already been voted on, I don't know if we want to necessarily bring it up at the next council meeting, but I would work with a team, not just the council, but a team of residents, people representing each district to come together and come up with what public comment needs to look like. Because all of us are smarter than any one of us. I am not the sharpest knife in the drawer, I'm not the dullest, but I'm not the sharpest. And I think with input from constituents and the leaders that are in city council, we should be able to come up with a protocol and a process for what public, public comment, effective public comment looks like. And in terms of, in putting back the live chat, absolutely, that's a, that's a no-brainer. Why should you restrict someone's ability to put a comment in a chat field? So I would absolutely advocate for that, Rashawn.
Thank you so much for that. Now, the next question, the next question that I had is kind of related, but not really. So, um, we see in the council meetings where um, one council me- uh, the council members get about five minutes to speak on a particular topic and then it goes down the line and then it comes back to them and then they speak for another five minutes and it just prolongs the meeting. Do you think that council members should have a time limit and a, and a number limit on how often they, they are allowed to speak? Because that has been causing a lot of contention in council meetings and cau- and causing it to go longer as well. What are your thoughts on that?
There's something called a timed agenda. Because I'm in a, uh, social organization which follows parliamentary procedure, you have an agenda, you should follow it, you adopt it, you can put time limits on it and you can also restrict debate. For example, uh, a member can speak only twice on, on a, on a, on a issue. And, but after, they only can speak the second time after everybody else, that's parliamentary procedure, so that is not inappropriate. But we don't need folks on a ten-minute rant either. Those comments should be able to be made in three to five minutes or less. So when we had to answer questions for the forum, we had two minutes and it's like trying to get your thoughts together and then get something coherent out in two minutes is not always easy. But we can do that same, we need to set up procedures. We need to have protocols for how we're going to operate, uh, within parliamentary procedure. And that's something I'm very familiar with, having been the president of my sorority's chapter, not only here, uh, as a charter president. Um, but also when I was in Maryland, I was the president of my chapter back there. And so you have to understand parliamentary procedure and how to conduct a meeting. So when your, when your folks don't understand and don't know how to do it, it makes a difference. Or they don't demonstrate that they know how to do it, I'll put it that way.
Thank you so much for that. And then the next question that I have is re- regarding retreats. So there is, th- there is some contention about the city council taking, spending fifty thousand dollars to go on a retreat for two to three days, what are your thoughts on that? And these are the, these are the retreats that the mayor, the council, city manager, leadership over of the whole city does. So what are your thoughts on that?
I think retreats are beneficial. Now, how much time and how much you spend, that's up for debate. Um, and I say that because in my social organizations and even in my federal position, we have leadership retreats. Now, they weren't necessarily at that degree of money, but we would actually, once a quarter, uh, in my federal capacity, we would go, we would travel for federal management team meeting. And all of the regional directors, the national director and the deputy national directors, of which I was one of, we would come together and look at where our program was going. I think that's necessary for, for them to come together in a different setting, not just their council meeting setting and work together and plan together. So there's benefit, but you have to make sure you're not being abusive with it or spending way too much money. I think there's need for that collaboration and cooperation amongst, and it builds, you know, you have to have a relationship with your colleague. Um, if you don't ever get to know the people you work with, you really aren't a well-oiled machine because, you know, there are five stages to group dynamics, you know, you form, you, you storm, you norm, then you perform. So there's a whole lot of things, I think there's benefits, in other words, to having retreats. I don't know if we need to spend fifty K, but I think they should have, I think they're needed.
Thank you so much for that question. And back to you, Ms. Wise.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, this is turning out great. So I have a few more questions. Um, city, uh, city council is engaged in a lot of, um, food insecurity programs. I think every district has a food giveaway, um, every month. Um, what is your plan to handle the, the actual food insecurity problem other than just handing food out every month?
Thank you for that question. I think we should collaborate. There are, and not just to jump on sororities, there are a lot of five oh one C three organizations in and around our city that could sponsor some of this food insecurities and we don't necessarily have to have seven food giveaways. We could do the old national food giveaway for all those districts that are along the old national corridor. And we could do something for, uh, one, two and three, because we're, we touch each other. Uh, four is an outlier, but there's no reason to have seven of anything. We can, we can collaborate because we are one city and we know we have vulnerable populations in this city. Um, if we did something centralized, uh, for, like I said, fo- five, six and seven, old national corridor, that makes sense to me. Um, one, two and three, that makes sense to me. The only one that would be out there on their own would be four, unless three and four did something together and one and two did something together, but seven is overkill. And that's just my opinion. Um, I think we can, we can, and we can also bring in other people instead of the city buying the food and handing it out. Uh, bring in other organizations, my organization, we give every month, we pack what's called chip bags, Childhood Hunger, uh, Prevention Program. We pack so the kids can eat over the weekend. So every Friday, they'll pick up their green chip bag and it'll have mac and cheese, um, ramen, a fruit snack, um, a breakfast bar, all kinds of stuff, you know, for them so that they don't go hungry over the weekend. We have enough for that kid to eat the whole weekend. We're covering four schools in the city right now. So I know that there are organizations, and this is just one little itty-bitty AKA chapter. I know there are organizations in the city that are willing to have, um, to have, to help. Because we all are supposed to help the least of us and we as a people normally do that. But it shouldn't be every single district doing it every single month.
Yeah, thank you for that answer. Uh, my next question is regarding, um, entertainment. Um, I know that there's a couple of, uh, well, se- several districts have, um, they promote, um, entertainment, um, concerts at Wolf Creek and things like that. It becomes a concern because of the amount of spending. Um, do you agree that maybe a, um, combining entertainment that's familiar with each other? Um, like District Seven, Linda Pritchett, she does the A Sukra. The, um, for her, um, you know, for her, for her culture. And then I believe it was Sebastian that did the international. Um, do you think it's more wise along this lies, along the lines of the food insecurities? Do you think that money could be better, best used by maybe combining these events?
Which I agree, but I will say this and, and, and not to, you know, you have to be careful what you say and how you say it. Um, my husband's Caribbean, so when he heard of the international festival, he was excited because we don't see a lot of things for people from the Caribbean in our city. So he was excited about that. But it was also Hispanic Heritage Month. And just like we do Juneteenth and nobody ever wants us not to do Juneteenth. I think if we have cultural representation in our city, we need to recognize each of the cultures. They should not be on the same day. And if we can combine, because Hispanic, Latin American culture or Hispanic culture is not necessarily, certainly the same as international. So international, I don't know if that included Latin Americans or if it just was Caribbean Americans. Um, but I think we have to better coordinate with each other. Um, to, if I can answer your question, I think we talk to each other and not, oh, I plan mine first. Well, no, it doesn't work like that. We need to talk, what's the problem with talking to each other? I think it's all about relationships. I think relationships need to have, um, need to come together so that we can do, do events that embrace every culture in our community.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Thank you for that. Um, my next question is, um, it is alleged, and I know I got some heat for this the other night. It is alleged that, um, some members of the council are being bought when it comes to, um, warehouse and data centers. What, what do you think and what is your opinion on all of the warehouses and the data centers that are being planned in ours, in our city? And I can tell you right now, I live off of Oakley Industrial and we have at least eight, we have two industrial sites, we have like four or five warehouses going down Industrial Parkway. We've got Amazon, we've got Cisco, we've got, I mean, it's just, and then I was told, we were told at a meeting, well, you do live on an industrial boulevard. And I'm thinking, well, yeah, you're right about that, but half of them are empty. And you want to build three more off of Sonoya and, you know, that area.
I will say this to you, because I had to educate myself on this. I would encourage every person on this call to go out and look at the current land use map that's on the city website. Please, because it will tell you what kind of property, what the property is zoned for. If the zoning is industrial, there is very little, if somebody buys that property and it's in an industrial zone, we can't tell them they can't build their warehouse there because it's what, industrial? Now, if it's residential, they cannot build it on residential property. So you have to arm yourself with information. Um, and I'm not as familiar, because Fulton Industrial is industrial. Warehouses, data centers, that's where they're supposed to be. But they're not supposed to be off Stonewall Tell Road in a residential neighborhood. And we have to corrobor- corroborate, cooperate or communicate with our union city counterparts. Because they're putting things in their city limits, but it's right next door to the city of South Fulton. So those apartments at Stonewall Tell and South Fulton Parkway and the data, the big data center that's coming back.
Yeah.
As well as the ware- whatever that, I guess it's a warehouse, it's huge. There are apartments and then you've got a warehouse and then you've got data center. One of our co- one of my, um, fellow, uh, candidates told me, told us that he would never, as an AI person who understands data centers, he would never put a data center in a residential area.
Yeah, yeah. And there's a lot of, there's tons of implications in terms of data centers. Many have mentioned, um, uh, electricity, water, sound, uh, light, it's, yeah, I mean.
Yep, they have, no, they do have Georgia Power, not Georgia Power. Uh, Greystone came out and had a meeting at Walden Park, I attended. And they assured residents that they're going to be on a totally separate grid and it should not impact, but they do use a lot of power. Data centers use a lot of water, they use a lot of power. There, there's noise pollution, there's a lot of environmental concerns surrounding data centers. And that was one of the reasons my fellow, uh, candidate said that it's not appropriate to put them in a residential area. They belong in industrial areas. So if it's not in an industrial area, you need to look sideways, but I'm not going to talk about the motives or what the other council people are doing. I'm just going to say what's right is right and what's wrong is wrong.
Hmm, thank you. Thank you so much for that answer. Um, is there anyone that has their, Rashad, do we have a hand up?
Yes, we have a hand raised. Um, I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Bailey. Oh, did you still want to ask your question? If you still want to, please unmute yourself.
Uh, yeah, my, my question, basically she answered it, uh, as she said, uh, if it's zoned, uh, she's not going to rezone. That was my question. I mean, because our council has a habitual, uh, you know, problem with rezoning AG one neighborhood, uh, suburban for, uh, warehouses. And she did say that she would not do that. And that, that was my original question. I wanted to make sure that you make a stand that you are not going to go against the future land use map, the succeeded plan, the comprehensive plan.
Are you asking me, am I for the future land, the, the future land map as it's written today, I am not in support of it for District Two. Because there's a lot of things that are going to be re-zoned to what's called, um, community, no, is it regional live work? And that means you could have as many as fifty apartments on a one mile, I mean, one acre lot. So you, everyone needs to please go look at that proposed land use map, read the definitions for each of the types of zoning that, and, and things that we are accustomed to, what we thought things were, um, are not exactly what they are. For right now, for example, the property that I signed the petition for is zone commercial, C U P, which is community use, but it's not apartments. And agriculture, AG one. So it's a lot to take in, it's a lot to try to, to, to absorb. But you have to know. But you have to know what the planned use is. Cause the planned use is to change it to community work. I don't know if it was community work, live or regional work, live. But it's for much more density right there in that corridor.
Okay, I, I, I understand that. But I also worked on the stra- strategic plan. And my point is, if you go to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. The strategic plan is the plan that you guys are supposed to work with as the council. The people have spoken. And if the people have spoken, and I'd like to say I participated in it. And there was a lot of outreach from a lot of people in the city. They came out and made it clear that this is what they want, where they want. I don't, I just do not believe that our council should come in and change it. If the people have said that they want this, whatever you're talking about, if they want it in that area. As a elected official, you probably should honor their wishes.
I agree with you. I agree with you. Uh, one of my things is penny for the people. I, I, my campaign is not financed by any developers or big companies. It is strictly small, uh, you know, don- donations from fifty, a hundred dollars, twenty. I even got a ten, five dollar donation. So it's small fry. These are my friends, family, neighbors. That are financing this campaign and it's not cheap campaigning, by the way. Um, but. I have no developers in my head pocket. I'm not beholden to anybody. I'm beholden to the residents of District Two. I'm beholden to the residents of the city of South Fulton. And I'm not afraid to ask people or take a poll. What is it that you want? Tell me your concerns.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, but, but, yeah, but, but the, the, the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan does that. It tells you what the citizens of this city have already, they've already expressed what they want. And that is the problem we are having now. We have a council that goes and changes the strategic plan and. You're saying that you're going to change. I mean, that's my thing.
No, that's not what I'm saying. The, the, that's not what I said. I said the comprehensive plan draft, which was done by contractors.
No, it was not. It was done by citizens. I worked on it. Now, there was contractors that took the lead and they told us how to go about it and what we need to do. But that was citizens in the meetings and citizen came in and looked at the maps. And they said that we wanted live, work and play here. We wanted uh, uh, commercial here. We wanted industrial here. It was, and it was, it had a lot of uh residents from the, it was active participation. There was a lot of people from the community. Uh, that came to all the, and that was meetings in every district.
Right, I, I attended District Two's meeting. I attended the.
I, I attended everyone across the entire city.
I didn't do all of them. I did the one that was held at Wolf Creek Library.
So that's what I'm saying. You, you know that there was a lot of people there, right? And so you know that people actively engage and they said that they wanted this and this, in these areas. But we have a council that changes it.
I think, I, I think in, in this particular position, I think we're saying the same thing. We may be saying it with different words. But let's just leave it, let's just agree to disagree. I just happened to look at the map um recently. Cause I went to the last uh Planning Commission meeting and I don't know if that's the same map. That was presented at the meeting that I attended at Wolf Creek. So maybe I need to go back and do a little research and make sure. Talking about the compreh- now, I haven't even touched the strategic plan. I'm talking about the comprehensive land use plan. So we can have a, a separate conversation about it. I'm gay, I encourage engagement, but I want to give the people what they want. But when you have folks who live over there saying, we don't want this, something, there's a disconnect somewhere.
Right. I think, I think. Uh, I, I, I think that you guys are on the same sheet of music. I think that the, 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 the point that's trying to be made is that. When, when it's not feasible for the citizens where we live, then it, it, the, the council has got to honor it. Am, am I right about saying that?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, yeah. So, and that's what I thought, that's the problem that we have, you know, that we have with, we're having a, a three, a hundred and eighty-eight acre. Warehouse near um, in District Seven, that's, has been a challenge. Um, because we just, it's, I, I believe it was zone agriculture and then the zone, um, the zoning, um. Zoning Commission just approved it and went in front of the, the, uh, now it's, I guess it's been withdrawn. We're supposed to have another thing. On Octo- in October and, and we just don't want it, you know what I mean? But great question and something to really, really be, be, be thinking about because. I always said, if we keep going, our city's going to become a warehouse data center desert. And, and then everybody's going to move out and then the businesses are going to move out and then you're going to see those things that roll in a desert, you know what I mean? So we got to be very careful. And then we have the other communities that are around us doing the same thing. So we've got to be very careful. But I think we have somebody's hand is up. Thank you, Bale.
Yeah.
Um, Rashad, help me here.
Mike, Mike Dunn, uh, I have a minute to, please, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I had a separate question, but I want to piggyback off of uh what Bale was saying. And what he was trying to explain is with the land use map, there was great community engagement. And the city listened. And so the community, the citizens did choose that. And what his concern is, and what my concern is, is it comes across as if, if you don't like it. Or a couple of your neighbors don't like it, then we need to change it. But my question is, and this is a question I have about every project, is. When there is community engagement, there are meetings, there are Zoom meetings, so on and so forth. The people that come in at the end to complain about it and create petitions. Never participated in the process at all, up until the point to say, I don't want this. And so is this ingenious, is this ingenious to. At like the community wasn't involved just because the people who complained were not involved in the process? Or they didn't get what they wanted out of the process? Because you're never going to please all of the people any time.
Okay, yeah.
At a point as an official.
That, that, that's fair. Yeah, that's definitely fair.
You have to make the tough decision. I'm, I'm getting to the question, because it's, it's, it's a good question.
We, we, we got, we, we only have a few more. I mean, how far did we go, Rashad? Eight thirty or eight?
About eight thirty.
Eight thirty, okay. All right.
Okay, I'll say it quickly. As an elected official, you have to make the tough decisions. That push the city forward over what a few people dislike. You have to do what is best for the city, not what is best for a couple of people who don't like this and don't like that, because they're never going to like everything. But my question is, what is your stance in regards to traffic? On the city of South Fulton having our own commuter light rail system?
Whoa. I think that's a, I think the, the, the commuter light rail system that you're talking about, I think that's a regional discussion. Because there are several other cities that surround us. And I think that for the city of South Fulton, they have its independent. Now, what I will say, Mike, is I know not a rail system, but the city I moved here from Columbia, Maryland. Not initially, but over time, they created their own little mini transportation system where they have Columbuses. So they have buses that go to all of the villages or the entire city of Columbia, Maryland. It's a village concept city. So I'm, I've come from mixed-use environments. I've come from, I've lived in different places. That's the beauty of being in the military. You live a lot of places. But I'm saying all that to say, we can't at, in a vacuum, as a city of South Fulton, decide we want light rail here. When we've got Union City, Palmetto, um, Fairburn, all these other uh, uh, Chattahoochee Hills. All that is surrounding us that we could all share in this and make it more cost effective to everyone, have a regional approach to transportation. I don't think a city approach to transportation at this point in our history, city's history is appropriate. But if the rest of the council and residents are advocating for, then I would support it.
Okay, all right. Rashad, do we have another hand up?
Yes, uh, so the next one is from Cody. Uh, Cody, please unmute your phone. I'm sorry, please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Hey, hey, um, Penny, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm great. Hey, I have a question. Just wanted to know, what is your opinion about the council approving the city manager? A seventy thousand plus salary increase?
Okay, I don't, honestly, I had not, I, I saw the budget. I didn't realize it was that significant of an increase, but I do know um, that when she came to our city, she inherited. Quite a bit to have to clean up. And I know we weren't making any money and she's made some significant decisions that have resulted in our city. Um, having money in the bank and able to put twenty million down on these facilities that we all know we need. For our law enforcement and fire uh protection folks. Um, but I would have to uh see why we wouldn't. I mean, I don't know why we would not. I don't think she's been incompetent. I know she had a lot to clean up when she came in. Uh, years of uh account, uh audits that weren't done that she had to do and now we're caught up. So I think, you know, major corporations give bonuses to their people when they're doing a good job. And they don't come cheap. A city manager is not a, uh, it's, it's a huge responsibility. They're the top person for the entire city. So I don't have a significant objection to that.
Well, I can tell you this, um, she does have an advisor. Um, she also uses another um. Retired city manager like to give her advice. I actually worked for the city for almost three years. I was the revenue manager in the finance department. So I know a lot of things that went on behind the scenes. So that's the reason I asked. Um, and something also I would like to say, if you are elected, please pay attention to the city manager's report. A lot of times, a lot of that stuff is just made up, just to, you know, please to counsel, to counsel people at the meetings and. You know, really dive into it, you know, because a lot of times, a lot of the information is not accurate, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate that.
Thank you, yeah.
I appreciate that advice. Um, as a matter of fact, I noticed it when we went to one of the. Uh, zoning meetings, uh, the documentation didn't match what was being said. And so I said, well, what is it? Is it this or is it that? So if you can't trust what you read, what's in writing is what matters. What people say is not binding. What's in writing is what matters.
Hmm, thank you. Thank you for that question and thank you for that answer. Rashad, how are we doing?
We have a question from Yashina Colbert Bradford. Yashina, do you have the floor, please? Unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. Thank you again, Mrs. Nellis, for having us uh forum. I, my court, well, I have to piggyback on the caller Cody. I guess my question to him would be, why did he leave his position uh with the city? Um, but the question for the candidate uh for Mrs. Webster Lu- Lewis. What would, what are the, your top, I would say, what would be your top four priorities? Once elected, if you were elected.
First, to really infrastructure, focusing on our infrastructure and making sure that we are able to get the community engaged. I want to go back to something that um.
Engagement from the community, what about the infrastructure? Would you change immediately?
What would I change?
Yes.
First of all, making sure that we're actively uh advocating for the changes that we need roadwise sidewalks. Uh, particularly for state roads and getting G dot to move. As we continue, every time we turn around, there's a new subdivision coming up, but there's nothing happening with our roadways. Now, some folks are of the opinion that you have to have the density before you get the roads. I think they can be done in tandem. You know, they don't have to be, bring ten thousand more people here and then we'll give you a wider road. I want us as a council or me to advocate to what I've already done, actually. Advocate with our state representatives to pressure G dot, if you will, on behalf of, because we're still, we're their constituents. And uh, Campbellton Road is, is a state road, so is Fulton Industrial Palmetto Highway. Those are state roads. So we would need G dot to help us, but the roads that are not state roads. That we have the ability to use chief's blocks funds to widen or put sidewalks, I would want to see that done, more lighting. Um, one person posted the other day, we have sidewalks that lead to nowhere. Um, all of the subdivisions are in great shape, but you can't walk anywhere else. When I was, when I've been canvassing, if you go down Stonewall Tell Road, after you get past. Some of the Stonewall Tell, there's no sidewalks at all. So if you try, you cannot go to those houses to knock on the door and say. Um, hey, consider voting for me because it's not safe. It's not walkable. Our walkability rating for our city is really, really poor. So that's one of the first things I would focus on is our infrastructure. The things that we can control at the city level and helping to advocate with our elected state officials. To push G dot for the things that are not our controlled roads. That's one thing. Butler Road's problem. I know our current council is working, I know our current councilwoman is working on trying to resolve the Butler Road. Um, issue with all the fatalities that have happened there. Butler and Camp Creek. That's, that's what I'm talking about, which is also an area in District Two, which is very dangerous. So.
Yeah, I think if they had worked on the infrastructure before they started to develop more in that area, uh, we wouldn't have the issues there.
I, I, I'm, I'm in complete agreement. So I would be advocating for us to get some resolution to that. Um, and then my other priorities is this in, in community engagement. You know, when I go to the meetings, um, and I've been going to these meetings either virtually or in person since twenty twenty-one. And the, the number of residents that show up are small. You think we have fifteen thousand residents in District Two. When you go to a Cliftondale, and I didn't even know the Cliftondale Club existed. So the outreach from the resources that are there isn't, isn't necessarily there. I didn't even know it existed until this year. But I did go to the community meetings that were held by my councilwoman. I went to Wolf Creek Library to every community meeting that was held for District Two. Um, I, sometimes I ended up uh going to things that were held at Renaissance Church for District Two. But there's so few people who actually come and are so ill-informed because we have life. You know, we all have jobs and children and uh kids' sports and, you know, all of those things that go into living in a community. And we hopefully trust our elected officials to do what's in the best interest of the people. That's what we hope. And when it doesn't seem like that's what's happening, based on some of the things I've heard as I've canvassed. And I mean literally knocking door to door. Folks are not satisfied in general, not necessarily with our councilwoman, but in with the council in general. Because up, up, uh, we're, one council person, the sum is only a, the, the whole is only a sum of its parts. So all of the council makes the decisions that affect the city. So making sure that the, the community is engaged and informed. Let, making sure you know where to get the information. You know, if that means having more town halls. If that means coming to more HOA meetings, that would be my engagement. So. That's what I would do. Those are the priorities that I have. Secondly, activities for our seniors, I want to continue those. Seniors are vibrant. Uh, the seniors of today are not the seniors of yesterday. They are active. They do a lot. And, and they outdo some of the younger people in the, in the community. Um, and also for youth. Uh, we need to have more activities for our youth so that they cannot be in, uh, in danger of being in trouble. Being a parent of uh, who's lost a child, I wouldn't wish that horror or sorrow on anyone. But if you don't have things in place for kids to do the right thing, that's a potential. So another thing I was very happy about that Councilwoman uh Gums did, she had the gun buyback. Since my daughter was killed by gun violence, I was really happy they were trying to get some of these weapons off the street. So things of those natures, to engage our community members, to make sure we have programs for our seniors and our youth. To make sure we get our community center up in Cliftondale and just be accessible to residents. I will not have a job, so you can call me and we can agree to disagree, but I won't be disagreeable. I won't say, okay, you're, I won't call you a name. I won't be rude to you. We'll just say, okay, we're on different sides of this issue. I won't say, okay, you're, I won't call you a name, I won't be rude to you. We'll just say, okay, we're on different sides of this issue. And we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Thank you so much for that. That was great. Um Rashad, do we have any other hands up?
Yes, uh Cody, iPhone Cody, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, I just wanted to answer the question she asked, why am I left the city? Um, it was a hostile environment, um nepotism, um. Lots of threats, example, um the city manager, you know, you made her mad one time, she threatens your job to fire you right then on the spot. Um, I actually did an exit interview and it's open records. My name is Cody, C O D Y. Last name Hugley, H U G L E Y. You can definitely read my um exit interview. The council had nothing to say about it, so. If you really want to know what goes on behind closed doors at the city of South Fulton.
Thank you for that, Cody.
Thank you, thank you so much for for that commentary. We appreciate it. Now, um. Does the city, now, the, in your opinion, do you think the city has a transparency issue? Or we continue to have issues with open records, things of that nature? So what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I I happen to look at, um, I don't know if we have necessarily, how can I put it? Some of the things that we want, we request, there may not be staffing in place to get it to us in the time that we want. There are a lot of vacancies in the city government. I don't know if you all loo- look at uh uh look at the, some of the newsletters that come out and they show the vacancies in the city. Um, customer service could be improved, but that is something that we have to work with our. City manager to improve, to to get quality people. Um, I heard the young man say nepotism was one of the concerns uh in uh the city of South Fulton. I hope that's not continuing. And I hope that um because of the 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 city manager report, reports to the mayor and the council. So that definitely needs to have converse, be conversation between the mayor and the council on how the city manager is managing the city. Um, so I'm not sure, uh. And I I'm looking at Ms. Harvey's responses, they do have a very high turnover rate, and I'd like to. Being outside is hard to look from outside and say what the true problem is. But you know, you have, you have to have people that are willing to have the hard conversations, but those conversations are with the city manager. And the assistant city manager, because I know they both have uh delineated responsibilities for what they're responsible for versus what. The council's responsible for, uh and the council has, the council and the mayor have the authority to release the city manager. And so, but we have to have grounds. There has to be, you have to have documented reasons. Uh if you come from an HR background or minimal management background, you know, you can't just, this is not the apprentice. You can't walk up and say you're fired. You have to have uh documentation and support for any personnel action you want to take. And that's why executive session takes place. Um, so, uh are you? Asking, I I think both youth and senior programs are needed. Uh Mike, to answer that question, but I hope I answered the first person's question. You have to deal with the city manager with the the council, and they all have to agree. You know, it has to be a majority of the council wants to take any action along with the mayor, because that's who supervises the city manager. So I hope, I hope I answered your question.
Um, then thank you, and and thank you for that answer, and thank you for that question, and you know, we talk about, um. The human, the human resources aspect of that, and I know you mentioned that the city manager is, and I know I spoke with Rashad. The city manager is hired by the city council and, and and there's just, for me, it just seems like there's a conflict of interest, you know what I mean? And um I've always thought, where's HR in all this? Why, why, why is, why aren't these, these people vetted through an HR process and? And then we let, you know, let the council interview, and then when there's accountability. Or when it's time for reviews or things like that, it's more of a more structured and and a professional line. But um.
I was of the opinion that that's what happened, because you have to put out your advertisement for the desire to get a city manager. And identify the qualifications that are needed, and you need that HR professional to vet. Those resumes and put the top candidates in front of the council. I'm not eliminating the human resources uh. Responsibilities. I'm basically saying that the supervision of the, of the city manager is the mayor. And and the, uh it's not the HR director, because the HR director reports to the city manager, if that makes sense, so.
Yeah.
Um, but the HR department is going to be involved with. All of making sure they capture the qualifications that are needed for this, for that particular position. And making sure that the candidates that are going to interview meet those criteria. We're not, we're not, we don't want to waive any requirement. We need the best that we can get for the money that we're paying, so. I I just wanted to make it clear that even though I talked about the council and the mayor, there is an HR process. There has to be.
Yeah, yeah.
They just can't pluck somebody off the street. No, we're going to make you our city manager. There has to be a competitive process for that as well.
Yeah, well, I think, I think our concern is with with um. That whole HR and the city manager, how the city manager, who the city manager reports to, and. She is the, like you said, she is the, she is the master of this game, this city, she is. And there was several conversations at city management meetings, well, look, you know, you're the city council, so. You do what you feel you need to do, and you know, and I thought it was odd, because, you know, to, for the city manager to have such responsibility. And and I think there's a, a lack of maybe some uh power, maybe? So, but I'm not sure. That's just a, uh, I threw it out there.
I think the city council and mayor have the power to terminate and hire, but the day to day. I don't know if that's their area of expertise. If they're getting a bunch of constituent complaints about something like uh code enforcement or.
Sanitation.
Sanitation, then it's up to the council to reach out to the city manager and say, these, this is what I'm hearing from my constituents. What can we do about it?
Right, and and speaking of sanitation, um that was a firestorm a couple of years ago. That sanitation spec, we all knew what was happening, we know, we all knew what it was about, and um I know my. My sanitation bill almost doubled, and just the the taste of it was bad, bad, bad. And even the city manager said, and even the mayor said, we fell on this. So where are your thoughts about, you know, we're supposed to be doing proper planning to prevent piss poor performance, but yet. You know, we're looking at a a a sanitation bill increase. We've had senior citizens very concerned about. Um, the sanitation bill overall and how it's attached to your mortgage now, and um, I mean, just. Not to go long-winded on it, what is your whole thought about it? Because it has been revealed, our tax bill. Is more than like, our sanitation bill is more than likely will increase in twenty twenty six, because we failed. The city failed to to work together and and get that right, so.
Well, I will say this, every contract has an end. Um, I don't know if the the contract, and because I'm not in city government, I don't think I have, I guess I could do an open records request. To see what um the contract for the sanitation looks like, but I know there's an endpoint. I don't know if they have one year renewable options, or whether, you know, I'm a former contracting officer for the Department of Labor also. So I know government, federal government contracts, but I'm not sure how the city contract process. I'll educate myself. I just don't know right now, but it doesn't mean I can't find out, but that contract will come up for recompete at some point. And if this isn't, if they aren't meeting uh up to snuff, then those are the conversations that council has to have with the city manager. And the city manager has to have with the buyer or the procurement shop about what specs we need to put in this next. Contract solicitation to make sure we're getting what we want and what we need. And at a reasonable price, at a competitive price, but a reasonable price, because every time you change somebody's. Um mortgage, you you don't know who's one paycheck away from disaster. You have to be thoughtful about what you're doing that's going to potentially impact um a person's mortgage payment.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, thank you for that, and yeah, I mean, the the sanitation bill is not living up to the expectations of what it was supposed to be laid out to do. We all know that, and um, and I think, yes, when you, when you, when you, if and when you win that seat, and that does come up. We need a hard, fair, honest, transparent uh look at it, because I can tell you, many of us. I personally, I I think it was, I think it was a scam. I think um the sanitation should have just been left. The way it was, maybe refined a little bit.
I will, I will say this, not to be uh controversial or or argumentative, most major cities do have their own. Sanitation program. Um, I was disappointed that ours didn't have recycling included, but that's a whole nother, that's a horse of a different color. When I lived in Georgia before, I lived in Littleburn, and we put our recycle and our trash out, and yes, it was a, it was a. Monthly bill that we got to our, to our personal homes.
Um, I think we do have reci, I think we have recycling and then we have monthly.
You have to go. Mer, but they would pick up recycle just like they pick up trash. You had a bin that sat outside. On your curb, just like your trash bin.
Right.
So I was very surprised that we didn't have that here, but nonetheless, nonetheless, um. All of that is is depending on, you know, your frame of reference, where you're from, what you're accustomed to. Both in Columbia, Maryland and in Littleburn, Georgia, I was accustomed to having both bins for my recycle and bins for my.
Something to look, definitely something to look at when that contract is up. Thank you. Rashad?
Yeah, we we have several hands up, so I'm gonna acknowledge Pamela Harvey, Ellen Map, then we're gonna go to you, uh Cody, again. So um, Ms. Pamela Harvey, um, you please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Thank you very much.
And we're, we're short for time, so make your, make your question so that we can allow um Penny to be able to answer it.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, my question is this, I'm glad you identified that you are uh work for the Labor Department. Uh, uh federal employee, uh, and. Could you give me a brief synopsis on what just happened to um the uh? Job Corps over here, um, over here on Roosevelt Highway, where they decided to. Uh, well, we've been having a lot of problems with that, that situation, but uh what's, what's gonna happen now? Since that area is nothing but a eyesore.
I will say this to you, Ms. Harvey, that's an excellent question, but I'm not at liberty to discuss it, unfortunately, because I am actively still. An employee of the US Department of Labor, and it would be appropriate for me to discuss it. What I will say. Is I know the contingency from uh the contingent from South Fulton came and met with the Department of Labor. And they may have met again with them this week, uh because the, our entire delegation went to the Congressional Black Caucus in DC. So they may have met with labor again to discuss the plans going forward. Um, with the Job Corps site in District Three. I'm aware, I'm well aware. But I'm not at liberty as a, as as a federal employee to, I'm not the spokesman for the Department of Labor, so.
I can understand that, um, I'm a, I'm also a retired federal employee uh under the uh, uh I was under the VA. So, but I know how procurement and that sort of thing work, and you know, I, my guess was that they're probably auctioning off the land to the highest bidder. So.
That I don't know.
Yeah, I I know you can't comment on it.
I can't. But thank you.
Okay, thank you for that question.
All right.
Thank you so much, Ms. Harvey.
Ms. Ellen Miller Map, you have the floor, please unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you for um allowing me to ask this question, Ms. West, uh Western Lewis, but I want to go back to the sanitation. Uh, and that, that has been the bone of contention since, since it began a little more than two years ago. Um, but I'd like to hear your thoughts about bringing the whole program back in-house, taking it away from the tax commissioner. So that mortgagers are not burdened with that extra, extra tax that we're paying. And that it does not have a disparate impact on those legacy homeowners, uh particularly seniors. Who are at risk at losing their homes, um if they should fall one day behind. Um, paying that, that sanitation tax. The uh council had, had worked so hard. To explain to us as citizens that it was not going to be a tax, that it was a utility, quote unquote. But it is in pa, in fact, a tax, but the city has the ability to bring it in-house. And bill it from in-house so that we don't have that worry, and then hopefully uh provide better customer service.
Thank you for that question. That's a great question, because I, believe it or not, I paid my bill to, to the, the, the tack, the trash folks. I wrote a check, and then they had already charged it to my mortgage company, so they sent me a refund, so I understand. Because I did not want my mortgage to go up either. Um, and so I asked about that, and and from what I understand, I could be missed. Have been misinformed that it wasn't a city decision to put it on, the mortgage companies wanted it. To be a part of your mortgage.
No.
No, I'm, I'm what I was informed, so I.
Yeah, no.
What I will commit to, because I can't, I don't have enough of the information on the details. I know when we got it, and I know I, it's part of my mortgage escrow account, I didn't want it in my escrow either. But I will find out how this happened and whether or not, if we can bring it in-house and bill it internally as a utility bill, I'm all for that. I would not, I do not want people to have their mortgages or their homes at risk. Because it's a part of their tax bill, because it's not taxes, it's, 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 um, it's weight refuse. Before, well, before the city took it on, we all wrote the company's individual checks every month, so there's gotta be another way to do it. I'm just not in a position today to say how I'd fix that, but I would advocate for it to be a different way, so that it's not. Attached to people's uh escrow accounts. That's what I'm willing to do, to advocate for it being changed. And if we need to bring it into the city and we have the ability to do that, I'm all for that.
And I'll just make one more comment on that. The city manager herself said that the tax commissioner already had a. A process of collection, and it would be easier on a city to allow the tax commissioner to make that collection process happen. Because they, they were already equipped to do it. The city didn't want to have to go through that process.
Ah, well, that's one thing about change. One thing is certain, there's always going to be change, and. Uh, I don't know if anyone, anybody wants to have their uh tax liability go up. And uh potentially create vulnerabilities for our fixed income seniors. Or our vulnerable co- communities that are just making it paycheck to paycheck. I am all for trying to pull that in-house. Yeah, is it going to be more work for the city? Okay, we have employees, we pay them, let's pay them, let's get it done.
Agreed.
And I believe we own our own, we owned, we own the trash cans, correct?
Yes, the city of South Fulton, yes ma'am.
So we, we already own our trash cans, so I think that's a great, and that's something that you could definitely bring to the table, and that's what I'm talking about. I mean, we own our own trash cans, why can't we have our own service?
And so that's, that's, this is where community engagement is so important.
Yeah.
That's why I'm advocating for having quarterly meetings. I'm advocating for coming out to HOA meetings. Or if people just want to meet right now, every Thursday from ten to eleven. I am sitting in Starbucks for anyone who wants to meet with me and talk about issues that matter in the city of South Fulton. I've only had a couple of takers so far, but I am there, and I will be there up through the um October ninth. So I just want to let you know, I am an ear, I'll, I read and respond to emails, I. Uh, I'm Penny for the people. I really mean what I say when leadership. With purpose and results that matter. That's what I'm accustomed to. I've always delivered for my supervisors. I've always delivered for my students in the Job Corps program. I've always delivered for my soldiers in the military. And I promise to deliver for the constituents of District Two, and everything I say won't make folks happy. And we, we, we can always disagree, but I promise never to dis- disrespect you or to be rude to you. That's just not in my DNA. And I thank you particularly for the controversial questions. I do appreciate them.
And I think that's where we're gonna end it, right Rashad?
Yes, that's well, uh, so mi- mi- Ms. Ms. Webster, was that your uh closing remarks, or would you like to tell?
After ninety minutes, I think, I think they've had enough of what I've had to say, but I just want, I will say. Remember, it's, my name is the last name under District Two, because Webster Lewis is a W. And all the other alphabets come before me, but it's Penny with one I. It's Penny with an I, Penny for the people, leadership. With, leadership with purpose and results that matter. It's Penny with an I, Penny for the people, leadership with, leadership with purpose and results that matter. I promise to work for you.
Thank you so much. Do you have, do you have any upcoming events that you would like to share with the public?
Other than just doing my, um, um, doing the Thursday meetings at Starbucks from ten to eleven. Um, I'm open to uh, uh driveway meet, meetups. Or I have not, no more uh meeting greets planned or fundraisers planned. I think I've done fairly well with my small donors and uh money's still coming in every day, but you can always donate to my campaign.
Will you be at National Night Out?
Of course, of course.
And I believe that is October seventh, I think that's the date.
I think that's the date, yes, because they, they changed it from uh the date in August, so I believe that's it, October seventh. I'm going to be probably at everything, uh, and just for those who don't know, I've only lived in South Fulton for nearly six years, so I'm not homegrown. I can't claim that, but I love this community and I really want to serve it. Um, and I think all my com- all my um fellow candidates really want to serve, so however this turns out, I don't think the city's going to lose. Nor do I think District Two is going to lose, but I truly want to be uh your representative. Uh, and I will continue to work regardless of whether I am the candidate that wins this race or not. And if I win, all of my, uh, we get to appoint people to boards. So I will u- make use of all the talent that you're seeing by asking them to serve in some capacity on one of the boards. Uh, in the, in, in, on council, that, in the city. So just know that I am a big tent person and I want to bring all of that talent in, because there's a lot of talented people running for this seat.
Yes, there is, yeah.
So much for that. Yeah, and before we wrap up, I just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, we will not have any events until the twenty ninth. And the next one is going to be with attorney Stephanie Johnson, and that's going to be uh here at seven PM, um, on September the twenty ninth. So, and uh, at Langston Hughes uh High School on Saturday, there will be the mayor's debate in person. And I understand all the mayoral candidates will be there and I believe it starts at three o'clock.
Three to five.
It's three to five, thank you for that.
Yep.
So, um, please come out to Langston Hughes High School to meet with, to, to listen, to hear from the mayoral candidates. Ms. Lewis, thank you so much, we learned a lot. And also, um, Ms. Patricia, thank you so much for, for hosting us tonight and being the moderator. And we look forward to seeing everybody on a future event. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you.
And everyone have a great night. Thank you, Ms. Lewis, thank you, Ms. Ma- thank you, Ms. Patricia.
Thank you.
All right, bye.
Bye.
Goodbye, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.